On February 5th, we have a variety of different vendors who are coming to showcase their careers and jobs and professions for all of our students in grades eight through 12. They're going to rotate through that career fair throughout the day. We're very excited about this opportunity and we want to thank Dr. Culp, our school counselors and our career and technical education department for their collaboration to make this happen. So this concludes my report this evening. Dr. Carter.
Questions, comments there?
Thank you.
Dr. Fox, any public comment tonight? Walk us through the consent agenda.
Yes, the consent agenda includes the approval of the financial reports, the approval of personnel action, the authorization to change appropriation and to accept and expend in accordance with the attached request, the approval of minutes of the December regular meeting work session, and authorization to dispose of surplus property.
I have motion to approve the consent agenda. So move. Second.
Second.
Ms. Reimers, could you call for a vote?
Ms. Mosteller?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Troutman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Scheeler?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Next is consideration of approval of 2019-20 secondary program. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, I think that Dr. Fox did a nice job of outlining them again. We discussed at your work session last month, so at this point, I just bring forward the recommendation.
I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Any comments or questions there about the program of study? It was very well laid out, in depth, at last month's. His work there. Ms. Reimers, could you call for a vote, please?
Ms. Mosteller?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Troutman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Scheeler?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Passes six zero.
Thank you. Next is consideration of approval of requests for extended field trip to public.
Yes, so each year we bring this forward to you. We've had a partnership with the school in the Czech Republic for many years, certainly well before I came into this position. And so, again, as a reminder, the bulk of the trip is during. The Czech Republic students come to us last fall, so now. I recommend approval of the field trip.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve? In a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions here? Thank you. Ms. Reimers?
Ms. Mosteller?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Troutman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Scheeler?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Item C, consideration of approval of the PCPS calendar for the 2019-2020 school.
Yes, this is always of interest to people, especially in the winter months, as we're looking to see what kind of weather we're going to get. So I will say that I personally felt very lucky this weekend that we didn't get the snow that was received elsewhere. The calendar that is attached to you is very similar to what you've seen in the past. I will say in this calendar, we have only able to build in 181 days, so we're only able to build in one incremental weather, inclement mental weather, sorry, day. In part because the way the winter break falls, it is a two break, so where the actual holidays fall in there, it's difficult to actually shorten that break. And as we're boxed in between the start after Labor Day and trying to finish school on Friday, it just was too challenging to add another inclement weather day into the calendar. So here, though, you do see a list of holidays that could become schools' days depending on what happens with weather or other scenarios next year. I did want to highlight on this that we had an employee come to us this past year and noted the fact that our 12-month employees receive fewer holidays than some of the other surrounding school divisions. So we did some research into that and that was correct. So we've added four additional holidays into the calendar for our employees. So we now don't have the highest number of holidays. That actually is in Newport News, but we are aligned with York County and actually higher now than Hampton County. So I just wanted to make a note of that. As always, it's great to get the input from employees. It's something that we just hadn't looked at before. So this better aligns us with some of the others. With that said, I'd ask that you approve the calendar for the next school year.
I have a motion to approve the 2019-2020 school year calendar.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments there? Known about or realized, so how did they felt like they could approach? Reimers?
Ms. Mosteller?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Troutman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Scheeler?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Passes six zero.
Last item for consideration is approval of proclamation National School Counselors Week and School Principals Appreciation Week. School Counseling Week, counselors employed by schools help students reach. Actively committed to helping students explore their ability. Development, and they also help parents focus. Principals, where can you start? According to this, very abbreviated based on what counselors and principals do, but says they work cooperatively to direct, develop, and inspire all members of school staff and school body and to communicate effective processes. They serve as educational leaders, managing the policies, regulations, and procedures, necessary. Safe and effective learning environment for all students in Pecoson City Schools and trusted with the opportunity and the responsibility of guiding, nurturing, mentoring, and imparting knowledge to our children while they're at school. So with that being said, do I have a motion to approve both the National Counselors Week proclamation and the School Principal Appreciation Week? So move. In a second?
Second.
And any comments, questions? We can't thank you all enough. So with that being said, Reimers?
Ms. Mosteller?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Troutman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Scheeler?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Passes six zero.
And we'll move into communications. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, just to highlight what Mrs. Wood said, we are in the throes of budget now, and I will be making a update for board members and the work set with regard to what the governor's proposed budget for us. The General Assembly is very busy right now. It is a question, so they will move quickly. So do know that we are tracking this and reaching out to legislators issuing our support and our concerns. So it will keep us busy, but if you have questions, I encourage them to reach out to us and talk to our legislators. I'd like to highlight one of our legislators, Delegate Hessel, who is our delegate, recognized by the Virginia Association of School Superintendents for his outstanding leadership in support of a public education award from VAS last week. And he truly is very supportive legislator that we, I personally talk to often about legislation. Appreciate that. And also, we are busy planning for next year, so before we meet in February, believe it or not, we're going to have kindergarten registration on February 5th. So anybody in the community who's listening, if you know folks who have kindergartners that will be coming to us next year, please encourage them to come and register on February 5th. It's a great night. And also, it does help us as we plan budget, have a sense of how many kindergartners we might have in class next year. So while we continue to work hard for this year, we're getting ready for next year, too. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Brendan?
Thank you. The first report comes from the primary school. Pecoson Primary School is showing kindness to our community with whole school service projects. Our school collected over 1,700 items in a food drive just before winter break. Three of our Girl Scout troops sponsored the food drive, provided each class with boxes, and counted each item brought into the school. We are also collecting plastic bags throughout the year to prevent plastic bags from being thrown in the trash or getting into our environment. We could win a bench from Trex made from recycled bags if we have the most, if we have the most amount of plastic bags collected among elementary schools in our competing area. Within our first two weeks of collection, we have already turned in over 128 pounds of plastic bags. Keep turning in those plastic bags. Pecoson Primary extends a large thank you to the Pecoson Kiwanas, who provided each student with a book to read over winter break through a generous donation. Our students were very excited to take home a new book. We would also like to thank the high school chorus students and their director, Ms. Wade, for their wonderful winter performance. We would like to announce our IPOP preschool open house for Thursday, January 24th at 6:00 PM in our school library. Parents of preschool-age students are welcome to attend and learn more about the IPO. Parents of preschool-age students are welcome to attend and learn more about the IPOP preschool program. Applications will also be available to fill out for the 2019-2020 school year. Kindergarten registration for the 2019-2020 school year begins February 4th from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM in the school library and February 5th from 5:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Additional information is on our school website, as well as a list of the documents needed to register for kindergarten. We look forward to a great start to our second semester, and thank you for the support of Pecoson Primary School. The second report comes from the elementary school. In November, the SCA began a food drive at PES. In December, PES donated six carts of food to the Parish Thrift Shop food pantry. This food will provide groceries to many families in Pecoson. The school received a thank you note thanking the students for caring about others and making a difference in their community. The ecology club has planted lettuce and other vegetables in container gardens and are learning about the ideas behind farm-to-table. The students are optimistically looking forward to a salad bar in the next couple of months and tasting the rewards of their hard work. Many students continue to receive positive office referrals for the respect, responsibility, and resourcefulness they show at school. The next report comes from the middle school. Pecoson Middle School is gearing up for a busy month ahead. We will be conducting two parent information nights during the month of February. Topics covered during these events include course information, the registration process, and preparing students for high school and beyond. New Horizons came to PMS today to present eighth graders, eighth grade students with the different program options that are available to our students during high school. This information will be utilized during academic and career plan meetings with school counselors during second semester. Our eighth grade students are also being prepared to participate in the career fair at Pecoson High School on February 5th. The career fair will allow our students to interact with individuals from numerous professions and help them target which career clusters currently interest them the most. All three grades are eagerly anticipating the Battle of the Classes event that will take place on February 4th through February 7th. This is an annual event that all students in the school can participate in to help their grade level accumulate points. There is a culminating competition on February 7th where one grade level will be named the winner based on total points earned. We hope to see you there. The final report comes from the high school. As we start 2019, the PHS Islanders continue to be hard at work. Students in our engineering courses recently completed their boat designs for the SNAME Boat Design Contest, which entailed working in teams to design and build a viable vessel through real-world application of course concepts. Students in digital marketing are busy developing a video highlighting elective course options, which will be shared with students in grades eight through 11 in preparation for course registration. Enriching experiences are occurring throughout the building as students are delivering DNA models, engaging in literature circles, exploring economic geography, and much more. Outside of the classroom, our students met with success in all district band auditions, at the regional DECA competition, on the basketball court, in the pool, on the wrestling mat, and performing in the CNU Honor Band. As the first semester comes to a close, students are encouraged to begin studying for their midterm examinations, which will occur January 22nd through 25th. We are finishing first semester strong and look forward to what second semester has in store. This concludes my reports.
Well done. Ms. Mosteller?
I want to congratulate Curtis. It was great to see him again. He is a remarkable young man, and we wish him the best of luck at Mississippi State. I'd also like to thank the Chesapeake for their partnership with Missy Class. I think job coaching is very important, and I hope that we partnership in the future. No further comment.
Mosteller said, I also want to say Brendan, you guys do a great job with updates from the school, so thank you. It's always good to hear what.
Just happy new year to everyone and best of luck to both the students and the staff. I'm sure the students are in books as we speak, you know, preparing for their exams in the week ahead. So best of luck to everyone, especially those seniors. Do not fall into the trap of senioritis, so.
Mr. Troutman?
Happy new year to everybody as well. Again, thank you to the Chesapeake and to all the principals. They're doing a great job. Thank you so much. And the counselors, I think, two great proclamations this week.
And Ms. Scheeler?
I wanted to say kudos to the school board office who's deep into budgeting. The whole budgeting process is very complicated. And we welcome parental citizen participation and any thoughts on that subject? Because it's always interesting trying to stretch limited dollars. In addition, I'm really excited, and this happens every year. I think, oh, if I had an alter ego and could go back and take some of these exciting courses, the the secondary program of studies for next year is adding fashion, marketing, business law. I mean, I had to take that in college to get a simple business law course. Introduction to Culinary Arts. It's really, it's really very exciting. And at middle, at the middle school, an introduction to computer coding and programming for middle school. It's just really cool. And just finally, I have to say that it was 10 years ago that my daughter went to the Czech Republic and stayed with Teresa Zabodjnikova, and we have been in contact with her, and she actually came back and stayed with us after that. So it's a wonderful program, and I'm so pleased that Lisa Hall is sponsoring it. And I appreciate the effort that goes through to make that happen for the kids because it really is an exciting program that changes changes the perception of our students, of other. So my comments?
Thank you, ma'am. I'd just like to thank everybody for all of the work that you do on a daily basis. From the big stuff to the little stuff, it all has to get done, so I appreciate everybody's work. Appreciate the parents who encourage the learning and studying, and students make us proud, study for those exams. And with that, let's see if I can find my agenda. We will move into any material for board review.
None this evening.
And we will adjourn to our work session. Thank you very much.